Well, we're trying to get Ryan visual. Let's like we can begin. It being 7:30, I'm going to open the meeting and for all concerns, this meeting is being recorded. Didn't look at the to see how many if other meetings all in there. I read them before, but I don't know if they're.
This is the 12th, the second and the 16th.
Yeah, that's what I got. I wanted to make sure that they were all done. They're ready.
Yeah, I read them.
Okay. Well, how are you making it out there, Ryan?
Starts off with my video. You guys can't see me, right?
No, not yet.
The lights on.
Nice snowman.
What's going on? All right. Well, moving on to the minutes, Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the minute stated November 2nd, 2021.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ryan Carroll and a second by Chris Hayden. Has any changes or omissions or additions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Roll call.
If yeah.
Mr. Hayden.
Aye.
And Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. So that's three in favor. There's only the three of us here tonight. So so far, I know we didn't hear from Jeremiah, right?
No.
Yeah, okay, right.
Mr. Pierce.
If you would please, I'm Mr. Carroll, if you would please.
Yes, move to accept the minute stated November 16th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Brian Carroll and a second by Chris Hayden. All in favor, Mr. Hayden?
Oh, I have a correction first.
Oh, okay. Any corrections or omissions then?
Page nine. Fourth paragraph. Second sentence, I believe it should say, there used to be a drive-in movie theater at that location. Not three used to be a drive-in theater. This placed an R, that's all.
Okay.
That should fit right.
Anything else?
Thank you. That's all I found.
Okay, and then all in favor, Mr. Hayden.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
And myself is I. Okay. Let's, since I see, I see we have Sergio here, so why don't we look at this A and Rs there? Does everybody read the verb and the? I'll take a look at that plan for that.
I did.
Is the only question that Danielle was the one that Danielle brought up, and that is whether or not that 160 feet on that lot is grandfathered, is that correct?
Um, you have to read the legal notice.
Oh.
Oh.
For the A and R, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, courtesy notice, but.
Yeah, it's a courtesy notice, yeah. All right.
I got it. Do you want me to read it?
Under the application?
Yes, it's the first page of the application.
All right, okay, I got it. Yeah, go ahead, please, please, Chris.
Town of North Reading Community Planning Commission Courtesy Notice. Notice is hereby given that the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a virtual meeting on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, on the application of 1214 Concord Street LLC for an approval not required plan dated October 26, 2021, drawn by LJR Engineering Incorporated for the property located at 41214 Concord Street, North Reading, Mass. Map 18, parcels 13, 14, and 15. Copy of this plan has on file in the Community Planning Commission Office Monday through Thursday, 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. and Friday, 8 a.m. to 1 p.m.
Okay. So once again, it is an A and R. And obviously, when we get into the commercial district, they have the frontage is supposed to be 200 feet. And I guess we're, this is grandfather Danielle, was that what the decision was? We can't hear you.
I discussed it with the building inspector and with attorney man, and the building inspector did agree that it became non-conforming when the zoning was passed at town meeting in June. Um, and so it's just retaining a non-conformity, and I don't know if attorney man wanted to explain any of that any further, but.
Yeah, I can, if it pleases the board.
Yeah, please, Jill, I'm, I'm, I'm just a little curious actually about.
It's, it's actually really unusual, right? But yeah, so when you have a non, when you have a non-conformity, um, which occurred, as soon as the project got rezoned, so you have these three lots side by side. One of the lots has 267 feet of frontage, so that's lot one. And you'll notice that after the A and R, it has 200 feet of frontage, because I can't not have it have 200 feet. But the middle lot had 160 feet of frontage at the time it was rezoned and 40,000 square feet of area. So I must retain 160 feet of frontage in order to maintain that non-conforming status. And the reason you're allowed to kind of shift frontages is because the property is already developed and used. So it is a pre-existing legal, legal lot for residential purposes. And the size of it, i.e. the lack of frontage, was protected because the non-conformity arose with regard to that lot due to the rezoning.
So, um, my question would be, if they decided to use that particular lot for a commercial purpose, would it then have to? You know, because you said residential purpose, but if it was going to lose. Would it have, would it have to go to the 200?
It's, yeah, I mean, I can't imagine how you could not do that. You can't just all of a sudden change. It's within there. The lot is, the lot is legally existing non-conformity. So let's think about, yeah, it could, the use, it still would be protected. You could, you could.
So for example, it would no longer be, it would no longer be residential, though. It would be commercial, but then.
It's the use, so it's a little different. So the reason, so when you have non-conformities, for example, you have the merger stuff. Merger doesn't apply when you have a use on a property, and that's why that lot, you know, it just stays where it is.
Because, because that lot is connected to other lots owned by the same owner, so theoretically you would, you, it would not, you wouldn't be allowed to keep the non-conformity because you own the abiding properties.
But, but you are because it's an existing lot with an existing use. So you, the reason, the reason for merger is to avoid overburdening a property. So you don't have that concept because you have 200 feet of frontage on either side of it.
And those are all, those, those always existed, is that correct? Those two lots in the front, all three lots kind of existed, right? Okay.
Exactly, Mr. Hayden, yes. So that's also.
So that middle lot has not, is not changing its line.
It, we did shift the line. We shifted the line, but it's maintaining 160 square, 160 feet of running frontage. Which you're also allowed to do because you're not increasing.
See, I see where you shifted it. You shifted that, you have that, that parcel B and that parcel A is the shifts.
Exactly.
Shaky ground.
It isn't. It's actually, you're allowed to do that as long as you don't increase your non-conformity. It's just the way, I mean, I, it's the way it works. So for example, I could have, before we even did the rezoning, come in with an A and R plan and done exactly what you just saw. Exactly, and it would be the same result.
And then, and then it would definitely be a non-conformity once it was rezoned.
And it's the same thing. It's the same application of logic. So that's why I say to you, it doesn't, it's protected. That middle lot is protected. The end lot, lot one, has to have the 200 feet of frontage because it, it had, it had more than the 160 before. So when it was rezoned, but I'll tell you, if I had done it before, Mr. Hayden, to your point, if in May, I had changed it to be 160, 160, and then 240, I could have done that.
Yeah, you could have.
I could have, but Mr. Mr. Coviello didn't want to do it. He's like, there's no, I don't care to maintain.
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if you would have been able to. I think your sideline to the, to that house on lot two would have been, parcel B would have been too close.
I thought I could play with it. I thought I could kind of.
You would, you, you'd have to keep your side setback off correctly, and here it is. But if you moved it that much up, that's another, what, 35 feet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't think it would have made it because of that side setback. But I do agree with what you're saying, Joe. It does, it didn't really make sense to me until you explained it. Now it does. But I do have a request for Mr. Coviello. You see how parcel B is going to have its octagon shape, basically?
Yep.
When, I don't know, he might already have some, some survey stakes out there that have a nail in them at those corners. I don't know if he does or not. But if he could put some, some rebar or some steel in the ground at those corners, so that the owners, iron pipes, so that the owners can find that later on, because it'll be, it'll be, you know, questionable in there. It's, it's always tough.
No, we'll post. I mean, I think Sergio, I, I, I think he's unmuted. Sergio, can you just confirm that you will in fact do that with the iron pipes, please?
Yes, not a problem. We can do that.
Thank you.
That's because, because we've had issues with it before, when you get an odd shaped lot, we put the iron pipes in, then there's never, then they don't come back to us asking us where the heck their land is.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, we'll put them in, no problem at all.
It's good, we're doing it for posterity, for the people to come after here.
I agree. I agree.
So, yeah, so, um, all right, I've not seen where we've been able to actually reconfigure a lot. Having a butter, having the abutted properties owned by the same owner, and then change the shape of the lot and still left it non-conforming. That's a little, that's like, you know, a few things more than what.
It's a, it's a lot doing on, going on at the same time.
It's a lot more than what I've seen done on, on a lot like that. And, and I'm wondering, and so my, 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 what I'm wondering is if it then, if that's going to then restrict this to residential use.
I mean, we are, no matter what, Mr. Coviello is keeping that front property as.
As a residential use.
And if he ever wanted to convert it, my guess is he's merged all the properties because he can have more than one building on a lot. So he would end up merging them. It's, he wouldn't, he, he literally wanted to keep them separate. Yeah, he wants to keep them separate because he wants them residential. And if he merges and he ends up doing, he would probably merge them, Mr. Pierce.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they'll probably come out that one driveway, not all.
Exactly. There would be no point to having both driveways. If you're going to do all commercial, it'd be better to come in.
Right. All right. All right. And are there any other, I know, I think that was the only real question, the only real issue that we had with this, is that correct, Danielle? Everything else appears to.
That's right. And I really kept my comments just to the question of the frontage and whether the plan was endorseable, because then anything future having to do with the zoning on the property wouldn't be, it, whether or not it's a problem in the future, I won't comment on, maybe, you know, it's just really what's in front of us right now is whether the plan is endorseable because of adequate frontage, so.
Yeah, because, and just because we endorse the A and R, doesn't mean you can do anything with it.
Right now.
Basically.
Yeah, exactly. That's what the laugh is for.
Yeah, that's the first, that's the first step. The next step is to get it, get it a permit for through the building inspector. But having, having already run it through him and having somewhat of a preliminary okay from him is probably helpful, though. So. All right. Ryan, do you have a, do you have, are we ready for motion on this? Do you have a motion for us?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, if you would please.
Yes, I move the Community Planning Commission vote to endorse approval not required on the plan entitled Plan of Land in North Reading, Massachusetts, Middlesex County, dated October 26, 2021, drawn by LJR Engineering Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second. By Mr. Hayden, is there any other further comments or questions?
No, I, that was my only request is that, you know, I've had that same problem, and other people have had the same problem about not being able to find their corners of their lots. And that's a funny, funny shape. Nobody's going to be able to go out there unless it's a guy with a survey to find the right corner.
Well, you put the iron rod, you put the steel pipes in the ground, the iron rods in the ground, you can find them pretty quick with the metal.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, sink them deep.
Yep.
All right. I hear no, any, no more, any discussion or hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Mr. Hayden.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
And myself is I, and that's the three of us for tonight.
Thank you very much. I will see you at your next meeting on the 21st. Take care, Danielle.
Thank you for coming and explaining that, because I was a little, I'm, I'm still a little on the fence on it, but we'll see.
I can explain it again. I can explain it again.
Yeah, no, that's okay. We're good.
Take care. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All righty. What do we got next here? Come on.
I think you're gonna have to go to your.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for this to come up. Okay, there we go. That one's all done. I couldn't just read it off of Sheffile. I had to actually download it, the plan.
You, you could, you could do your accessory units or your small wireless. Or we can do the discussion on 35 Main Street.
Right now, I'm just trying to wake this thing up, so hang on.
I, I should say that the ADU and the small cell wireless, I have not really had enough time to move them forward enough for a real discussion, so I think we'll have the next one.
We could, we could give on those.
The discussions are not.
I've had some pretty spirited discussions with a few different people on those, though, lately. So, um, so, we might, so I'm looking forward to get, get, we're putting it back on the agenda then.
Great.
So, and to see what we would, how we, how we might approach this. Good evening, Jeremiah. Nice to see you. Okay, so, then I guess we can do, what have I got? We'll do the 35 Main Street Storage Facility Discussion.
Sure.
You, what?
I see Mr. Hall is here.
Okay.
But you're muted, both of you. Mr. Hall is muted.
Oh, okay.
Oh, still muted.
Want to unmute yourself there? Lower left-hand corner.
Oh, you remuted yourself.
Can you, can you unmute yourself?
Are you on another device that needs to be unmuted as well? Because I see you, you're unmuted on one.
Two, you got two going here. There you go. No, it's still not, you, it's still muted. Are you on the, you're on the phone and? You're showing up in two places. Is it just nod your head is the, is the computer you're using doesn't have the audio? So while he works on it, Danielle, do you want to, you want to give us just a little overview of what it is that we're?
Sure. Um, so Mr. Hall contacted me recently. He had been in front of the CPC six months ago with a request to change some of the space, you know, to not have it be required to be retail, but be able to use it for storage. And I guess the, you know, six months have gone by, and I guess has not been successful in finding tenants for that space, so wanted to discuss that with us. Prior to, you know, he hasn't filed anything, but.
If I remember correctly, we told him to come back in six months after he tried to market it a little more.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think that much marketing is going on, Warren.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been, I've been looking into it a little bit, and I think it's Atlantic Realty he's got it with. And LoopNet had it on there for a while, but they're not even advertising it anymore. So I don't know when, how long he's been not advertising it, because I haven't been tracking it every day. But, you know, Zillow picks it up, but they think it's a single-family home kind of thing. And a couple others do the same thing, because they're, they're looking at homes, but they see the property. So some of it thinks it's, it's not developed yet. So, you know, I just don't see, I don't see a lot of effort. You know, it's just that, that one, that one Realtor has it, and I'm not sure how much, you know, they're really trying to move it in this market.
Well, one of the things about this market also is, we, you know, one of the considerations, I would say, for this particular situations is that anything that we do now kind of becomes forever.
That's right. That's, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
So for the sake of these months, few months, we willing to make a forever decision. And again, I don't know. I mean, there are a lot of things I think that play into it, not the least of which is the propensity of people to do a lot of their shopping online now. And whether or not they'll go back to the brick and mortars once the whole COVID thing goes away, that's a question. I don't know if we can answer, because the longer we stay locked out, if you will, the more used everybody's going to get to dealing with everything online. Actual shopping in the stores may drop off by some amount, so.
I don't know, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think there's also a need and want for people to be out there and going around, and, and those don't need to be stores there. They could be anything.
But boutiques, you know, we don't, we don't really have anything, you know. I mean, I don't know why we can't get some of these stores here. Whether they, whether it's, the thing is so omnipresent as a, as a storage facility, that nobody would ever think that there'd be a store there. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, there's good storefronts. There's good storefronts.
Presence is as a, a storage facility, so the fact that there may be a boutique where they could buy something nice might not occur to anybody unless there's advertising out front.
Yeah.
So, just not sure that this, I'm not sure that I'm ready to make a forever decision on this.
Exactly. I mean, so some of the, some of the advertising is a little bit interesting, too.
Okay.
They're talking about, like, I can't remember exactly what it was. I left the paper where I was at another location. But one of their, one of the pamphlets that this Realtor came out with, came up with like some number that didn't make any sense with what the, what it was supposed to, like, supposed to be square footage or dollars or something, and it made no sense to what it was. But maybe I can, if I have a minute, I can find.
Hang on a minute, hang on, because Jeremiah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, like, with the potential, we're coming down the line. It seems like we should be more forward-thinking and what the possibilities are under that, under that, you know, alternate reality versus where things are now. As you say, you know, it could be a long-term decision that we're making. So I'm inclined to say that we should give it some time to breathe under, under that, that possibility, because, you know, boutiques are not, you know, that, that's going to open up usages that could be long-term beneficial for the community that, I don't know, that closing them off right now would be the, you know, best idea.
Can I just make the suggestion, John, are you able to phone in using the, the call-in phone number from your phone rather than trying to link from the Zoom? I feel a bit bad that John's not able to respond to any of this. Um.
So.
Well, hang on a minute, Chris. Chris, hang on.
Yeah, no, 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 it's all right.
But do, John, just, and now you had, you, are you on a laptop? And does it have, it has a microphone and all that? Can you see in the low left-hand corner? Yeah, okay.
The muted just came back on.
Okay. You're unmuted now.
Now it's off.
But I can't hear you. So is your microphone turned down on your computer?
There might, the volume, like, the X might be out. Um, are you able to dial the phone number that's given, or is it not working, like, through your telephone?
I don't know if he knows what it is.
Oh, do you want me to, do you want me to give it to you? Okay, let me put it in the chat one moment. Just pull it out of the agenda. One minute. Okay, um. I mean, first.
John, but shaking your head, have you used that before as a, and it worked okay?
Okay. The phone numbers, it's 1301, but I'll, I'll put it in the chat, 301-715-8592. And let me put that in the chat. Oh. I see the phone number appearing.
He's in the waiting room.
Okay, I've let him in.
Now maybe you can talk, talk, John. On your other phone, the phone.
I am.
There you go.
I can hear you. Yes. Okay.
There we go.
We don't need to see him. Just need to hear him.
Get the phone close enough to your mouth so we can hear it.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
So you've heard what we're, what we're doing. You made, wanted to make some comments on it.
Correct, yeah. Let's go back to the beginning of time when we first got permitted for this project. There was no, no, nothing in the bylaw that decided to be a multi-use property. We listened to the board on a couple of things they wanted to do. They wanted us to incorporate the town colors in our logos. We did that. We entertained the doing the retail. We said, sure, we'll try that. We've had a professional Realtor, Atlantic, as you mentioned. We've been marking in it for two and a half years now. And we haven't, you know, things were, had a couple of interests before COVID hit, and since COVID hit, the last 20 months, there hasn't been anything, you know. Couple of people come in and look at the space and never hear from them again. So I know you guys want to see this down the road as the, what options might be coming with sewer, with the sewer coming down the road. And not sure when that'll take place. That could definitely change the use of the units, but, you know, we've been pulling this dead space for going on two and a half years. So I went back to you guys back in July. You told me to come back in six months. And nothing's changed on the property. We still have 10,800 square feet of vacant space.
Okay.
So originally, we went in, we were just going to do all self-forward. And the board members thought it would be good to have multi-use. We said, okay, we'll try it. And when we tried it, we hired a professional to market it. A professional commercial Realtor. And I haven't been able to sign a lease since we opened in, we started marketing in May of 19.
Yeah, all right.
So can I, I have a question, Warren, if I may.
Go ahead, Chris.
So Atlantic Realty put together a, a little brochure for you. Did you ever read that, John?
No, they've put out multiple, to be honest.
I'm looking at one right now that's online, and it says 11,000. I'm looking at one right now that's online and it says eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-six average drive time. I have no idea what that means. You know, it's, it's, it's interesting. I mean, they've got, they've got a nice picture of the building. Um, and the plot plan and stuff and a couple of pictures of the aerials, but a little bit of words on there.
Every day.
You know, one line doesn't mean anything to me.
How, how many people, business people do you think have traveled up and down that road in the last two and a half years that would have seen the for lease signs?
Uh, I don't know. They're not very big for lease signs. They're, you know, you have to be looking over there, but if you're going too fast, which is one of the problems we have on this road is the speed, you don't see it. I mean, you see there's a big, there's a big building over there and it's a storage building. You don't know if there's anything else over there.
I think, I think that's part of the problem. I think that part of the problem here is that this, this site needs to be, you know, I mean, like it would need to be pretty actively marketed. And and it sounds, I I didn't look into it myself, so I'm going on what Chris has said. It doesn't sound like they've uh, it sounds like kind of a half-hearted marketing, not, nothing that really not really trying to do anything with it. I mean, you know, if you, if you don't, if you don't try, you can clearly not get anything.
Right, but after two years of a Realtor marketing something and not getting any interest, I'd be frustrated probably as well.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the whole, the whole point is there was nothing in the bylaws that said this had to be a multi-purpose, multi-use location. Um, we took, you know, you guys said that there was a need for retail in the area and that we should try to attract other people. And we said, sure, we'd love to have other people come to the site because then they get used to us being there in our office. And if they ever need storage down the road, they know where we are. So we said, sure, let's go, let's try it. And we've tried. But I'm the one who was putting up the financial burden for the last two and a half years of having empty space. In a market that's not even, you know, in an environment and an economy that, as everyone knows, uh, is not great for retail.
What's the um, what's the condition of the rest of the building? Is it full?
Uh, the, the storage section, seventy-eight percent occupied. Once we hit seventy, we start looking at the next area to start building out because by the time you do the design and the lead time and everything else, that takes another probably six months before we could fill in the, or four, probably another five months before we could finish that as storage if we were to move forward. So that's why we looked at it in July when we finished off the third floor and because we were basically out of units by the time we finished that. So now we're basically leasing up.
Hey, John, this is Ryan. Um, quick question for you is right, um, what, what would you propose doing if you were to, you know, if the board were to grant you to, to infill a couple of those retail storefronts? I mean, would you just be frosting the glass and converting it to a storage space or?
Uh, basically, there's two sliders for, for storage customers to access on the either side of the building. So there are ten-foot openings with the five-foot opening sliders. We replaced the front man door with a slider because the front man door is only a four foot. But people would have difficulties getting the uh the dollies through and the carts that we provide to get through. So we'd want a bigger opening than what's there. So we'd put sliding glass doors, just like we have on the side.
In, in place of the, the current, like, retail storefront opening?
Correct, correct.
And then, and then what? That retail space would just be someone storing their stuff in there like any other storage unit?
Correct, we, we did, uh, fit out the rest of the space with the, with the actual units themselves.
Oh, like you have like a, a steel cage or something that goes inside?
Correct, yeah, they're all free, pre-standing. They're just bolted together and you can just infill it. That's what a lot of people do with conversions of old buildings and things like that. They don't, they just keep the shell and fit out the inside for storage.
Is there, is there any way, John, to, to gain access from the backside so you could maintain the storefronts in case you wanted to?
We weren't able to do anything behind the back without conservation. We had to get permission from them just to trim the trees that were hitting the building.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I meant like internal in the building. Is there, I don't know what's, I don't know what's directly behind the demising wall at the back of the retail space.
In the tunnel, John.
There is a drive-through that we could have access through. I'd have to look at the floor plan and see if that would interfere with the other doors that we have for the drive-through to access the elevators.
Yeah.
Because you go into the drive-through and then there's three parking areas that you park inside the building and then because one for each, for each elevator.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I don't know, guys. What's your pleasure? I mean, do you uh, do you want to um again, I, I don't, I haven't looked into the level of marketing that you've done. And so uh, but based on the research that Chris has done, the marketing hasn't exactly been enthusiastic.
Right, well, there's been a for lease sign on there for, like I said, over two years.
As I said before, though, by, by virtue of the fact that you, that the whole thing is built in, in, in the facade, it presents itself as a storage unit. You're unlikely to get a drive-by as, as, as much as you are likely to get somebody who's looking and looks online and goes to Atlantic Realty and gets something besides some, you know, uh, some gobbledygook that that's written down there. Gets perhaps a real description, a real cost analysis and stuff like that. So, I mean, I mean, based on what he's reading, they, I, I, if I was looking for a space and I read that, I'd keep right on moving.
Right, I agree. That's not the best word. Um, I know Mr. Hayden said that, you know, it's been up on LoopNet and ideally you don't keep a property up on Loop, LoopNet.
Well, it's actually not on LoopNet now.
It's correct. Probably because you don't want it showing that it's been available for a thousand days.
Well. That's, that's, that's fine. So then it's only Atlantic Realty that's been looking at it. And how long has it been off a loop that I haven't checked? I mean, I could find out, I suppose. Right. You know, um and everything else I see in here is all old stuff about uh, when it was a bowling alley.
Okay, John, here's what I want to do. Here's what I'd like to do. See if everybody agrees with this. I'd like to uh, put you on next month for a meeting, okay? And I wanted, we're gonna, and I'd like the rest of the board, we'd like to, I'd like to do a look at it to see what kind of actual marketing has been done and maybe talk to Atlantic Realty and see if we can get a feeling from them about just how bad or how impossible this is. And then if, if they convince us that that is, then we may have a better shot at, at moving in your direction.
Okay, I'll send Danielle the uh, the broker's contact.
Okay.
I'll have the, the number who's been listening.
Yeah, we'll take a look. If you, and if, if they've really given it a fair shot, I think we can give you a fair shot. But if they haven't, you know, then they, then they should. So.
Okay, that's right.
Okay. Does that work for everybody? Anybody else have any questions about that or would like to make any changes to that? You okay, Ryan?
Sounds good.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, you know, this is a forever decision, John, for us, because once we do it, it's not, we're not, you're not going to go back. That's not your business to go back. So you're not going to go back. So really, we need to uh
We made it, the use of storage is a five-ten grid. We made that twenty-twenty. So ten years from now, there's apartments needed in town or something, we can convert, take out the units and convert that to you know, go back to the planning board and convert it to apartments, who knows?
That's an interesting concept. I like that.
So we got.
Let's, let's give us a chance to do, do a little more looking into it and spread some information out to the whole board. And then we'll come back and I'm not going to make you wait a long time, just a month, so that we have a chance to really look at this. And then come back. And if we think that that's uh, that it's not, that, that, that there's been a fair, a fair attempt made and um, and um, then I think you might have a, a chance of getting, will you need to go there? All right? Okay.
Can I just, can I just ask, um, Warren, how would you want this to be on the agenda next month? Do you want us to consider it a minor modification? Is he applying for site plan review? Is it just another informal discussion?
Well, I don't know just yet. I want it, I want to have everybody, I mean, we could put it back on for a discussion because
Okay.
Um, I mean, we can obviously, if we, if we get close to the date and, and we've all talked about it and it looks to us like that that's a direction we're going. Yeah, we'll put it on as a minor mod and, and, and we can vote on it that night. So, okay. But we'll make that decision when you get a little closer.
All right, I'll send that information up to Danielle.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, I hope this had worked out better for you, but we'll, we'll, we'll give it a fair shot.
All right, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, um, yeah, I think that's the best way to handle it. We need to look at what's really going on there, so. Chris, you might, we might have you, see if you can accumulate a little more information on that.
Sure. I'm trying to find out where, where they're located. It looks like the closest is in Revere. I mean, they're, they're not even locally, you know, so.
Well, let's take a look. Let's see what we've got, what, let's see what's out there and see what else is out there. He'll get that, he'll get the information over to Danielle. We'll talk to them and see what the, you know, what they say about the, you know. Um, and it'll also give us a chance if we want to talk to a commercial Realtor on our own.
Yeah, you know, and he, he forgets that that was a special permit and he needed my vote for that special permit.
Yeah.
He got it because of that.
Okay. Yeah, that's okay. I don't, I don't think that's the issue. I think because there might be an issue of fantasy, so let's uh, let's, let's take a look, see what we can find out.
Right, no, no.
Readdress it.
You know, he, I, I, we actually have a storage unit in that, in his building.
Yeah.
So he just opened up the third floor and, you know, so I don't think, you know, it, it won't take him long if he, to, to make the changes on this place. Commercial is a little different than other things.
Yeah. Well, uh, we, we, we are a planning board, so we have to respect somebody that's doing planning.
Yep, we do.
Okay.
We do.
All right, um, okay, I've lost this now, let me see.
Oh, you got your time certain. You can, you can do your next motion, Mr. Pierce.
Yep.
Orion, Orion, Ken.
Yeah, well, my iPad dropped off, so I just had to bring it back in again, yeah, so. All right, so um, ninety-two Concord Street, um uh, site plan review. So Danielle, I'm going to let you, I mean, I know, rather than be explaining, why don't you explain it to uh, what's, what's going on with that?
Sure, so after, I know that we have over the last.
I'm sorry, do we have to do, we're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna hear this tonight, is that correct? So we don't need to read the public hearing notice?
Well, I think, so town council advised me that because it's been advertised, what you should do is open the public hearing and then continue it. Um, I know Mr. Keys, you know, indicated that he would like to continue it, although I don't know the date, just have to make sure we have a, you know, date and time certain, um, when we do that. So I don't know if you want me to give an, any kind of introduction about why we're continuing or if you just want to.
Not yet. I think the first thing we're going to do is just as I said, we're going to read the public hearing notice and formally open the hearing and then move from there, so.
I don't know, I don't know where that one is, so.
Uh, the public hearing notice, uh, well, let me just look here.
It should be with the application. I usually put it when I, where I put the correspondence or application, it should be the first page.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't download that, sorry.
Application.
Yeah, there it is. I got it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
If you would please.
Town and North Reading Community Planning Commission Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on Tuesday, December seventh, two thousand twenty-one at eight P M. On the application of Brickway Realty LLC for a site plan review modification for the property located at ninety-two Concord Street, North Reading, Mass. zero one eight six four, map two, parcel three. You may participate in this hearing online at HTTPS colon backslash backslash U S O two web dot zoom dot U S backslash J backslash nine eight five four three zero zero nine two six. Or by phone with the phone number, meeting ID is the same. Uh, this hearing will be broadcast live on NorCam. I think that's the gist of the whole thing.
Okay. Okay, so that, with that, with that reading of the public hearing notice, and I will open the, the here, I will open it. Now, um I'm sure everybody's read the uh, the uh, list of complaints and all that stuff, but there are some issues. So I thought I saw, is one of the owners a Mr. Moran?
Yes, and I did see him on the call.
On here, I don't see before.
I did see him sign in, but I don't see him on right now.
I don't see him now. So um, why don't you then give us a brief uh, explanation of what we're not going to do tonight?
Um, so we were just advised to open the hearing and continue it. Um, the issue was that, um, we heard from, there are three trustees. We heard from two of them that, um, they were not in agreement with the application being submitted. So, um, the application that submitted, um, you know, was, was done by attorney Keys, um, and he was not able to get the signatures of the other two trustees. Um, we had town council look at it to be sure we were responding to an application, you know, that was with, um, you know, authorized by, by the ownership as defined in the, you know, the, the condominium trust, um, their master deed. And the way that the, um the way the trust is set up, the town council advised us that we needed all three and we, we do not have that, so.
Okay, so um, I wanted to open the public hearing because they couldn't, they could withdraw at any time without prejudice. But um, but not if we, but I didn't want to discuss it without a proper opening of it, so. So um is there, uh, I don't know if there's uh, anybody is, I see we have Joe here. Is that Joe Keys?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Do you, um, did you want to make any comments on this or do you want to wait until we collect all the signatures and?
I, I would, I would like to ask for a continuance. The, the trustees are sitting down this week to discuss the matter. And to be quite honest with you, the one trustee that I've been dealing with, I was under the assumption that all three trustees were on board. Um, and that's my, my oversight. I apologize for that. I was pretty much ready to go tonight until I heard from uh Debbie on the, on, I'm sorry, Danielle on um, Friday about this. So I'd like to get that straightened out and if we can be put on for the next meeting, I think we'll be, we'll be ready to go.
Okay, good. Well, that's why I opened it and we'll continue it because that way we don't have to go through that again. We can red-alon.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, okay, so um, you, you, so we, we have a, do we have a formal request or we need one because we're still on timeframe, so.
I have an email, but it doesn't specify the date. Um, I do, I mean, I, I think we should make a motion to continue it to December uh twenty-first. I know we have our subdivision hearing coming back. I believe that's at eight o'clock on the twenty-first. So, I don't know if you want to make this one, um if we make it eight fifteen, it will likely be a little bit later. We could make it for eight thirty. I'm sure the subdivision will take some time.
Yeah, so if we make this one eight fifty, I don't, I don't necessarily.
Debbie wrote it for eight thirty in the motions.
Um, what, for, for next?
Yeah, for the twenty-first, yeah.
But, but here's the thing, I'm not, I'm not sure that, um I'm not sure that this is a short discussion.
No, I don't think so.
I, I don't think it is either, Mr. Chairman. I think there's a number of issues that we need to kind of straighten out. This one's been a long time coming before the board. And mainly I had advised uh, the one trustee that I was dealing with to get all of the physical issues uh, with the building complete before we came to, to your board, uh, so that, you know, those issues would be all squared away and, and no one would be saying, hey, what about this? What about that? Uh, we wanted to get all those issues addressed. There was a lot of engineering that had to be done and due to COVID, a lot of the engineering companies that he had previously dealt with, uh, were, were unwilling or unable to come out to the property. So we've been really kind of hamstrung by the whole, the whole process over the last year and a half, so. Um, we'd like to just, you know, come in.
Do you want to go this until the beginning of January to give you some time?
That, that's fine as well. I mean, is, is, are there any specific items that the board has now that you, you want me to specifically address the next time around? I, you know, is is there anything that you guys have on a list that you have issues with that?
Well, we have a list of issues. However, I very much like your concept of trying to take as many of those off the table as possible. It certainly makes the whole thing easier.
And like I said, I think all the. And like I said, I think all the physical issues, I mean, you can check with the, uh, with the, um.
Building inspector.
With the building inspector, I think as far as the physical issues, with the exception of, I think, one thing that arose last week or two.
The crash of the building.
I'm sorry?
The crash into the building?
Yeah, and what, what, essentially, essentially what happened with that is one of the employees, you know, the you know how the new cars are where you have, you don't have a shifter anymore, you got a little dial?
Yeah.
And she thought the dial was in park and it was in drive and she hopped out of the car and the car just kept going, so, uh, that was the problem. What what happened there, um, you know, it's kind of an engineering issue with the with the car, I guess, but, um, I know that, um, someone had, uh, mentioned that they want some bollards installed and things like that, and and Mr. Bova has already gone and got the engineering going for that. So, uh, you know, we wanna, we wanna do everything that's required and 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 get everything done, so. Um, like I said, as far as if we can address all the physical issues and we can just at least start the meeting going, okay, those are all done. Here's the newest site, new site plan, and essentially with the site plan, all we're doing is moving the dumpster. And I think there was one other issue that we needed to hammer out.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna lower the amount of parking for the office space too.
Well, there are some other issues there too, Chris, so what I would like to do is not get into the issues right now.
Yeah, I think parking is gonna be a whole discussion because that, you know, that's a whole.
Yeah, I think if you get a copy of the memo, of Danielle's memo.
I I I I saw that, yeah.
Okay, that will give you an idea of what some of the issues are, and as many of those as you can, uh, take care of or come to some kind of a, uh, a conclusion on, that would be fine, because it doesn't necessarily mean that because you asked for it, that you're gonna that we that we're gonna allow some things that do violate our zoning and and again, I was involved in the initial approval of this and we, they were awesome. And, um, I remember a lot of why we did what we did and what those concerns are, so you might. You would be probably well.
Yeah, I was before my, before my time when the building was built, uh, yeah.
Right, well, I was gonna say you might be well served to review the, the, uh, the file on that.
Yeah, that's another great point. I'll come down and grab the file if that's okay, Danielle, and I'll, I'll, I'll read the whole thing.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to go about it, because then you get an idea where we were coming from and why we did what we did, and that will help a lot. Uh, and it may change, maybe, and they change what you ask for, uh, and and make the whole thing a whole lot easier, so. Um, so I I recommend that you do that and that we, uh, and that we moved you to maybe first meeting in January to give you time to do that, assimilate all that information and make the changes you can make and then so the site plan that you ultimately bring to this next meeting will be, uh, probably a lot simpler and maybe a lot easier to get put together.
Sure, sure. So what, what, when would that date be for that meeting?
January fourth.
I'm just sending you an email, Danielle, right now requesting a continuance for that date.
Sure.
That, will that work, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the request?
Yep, yep.
Okay, there it goes.
Okay, we're all set. We know you're asking.
Okay, got it verbally, got it verbally at a public hearing, Warren.
I know, I know.
It's recorded three ways from Sunday, so.
That we can go ahead and vote on that and get it moved along there, so, um, um, so. So, uh, we have, so, uh, Brian, do you want to make a motion or do you want us to just paraphrase it, yeah?
Yeah, do we want to do it for the fourth?
Yes, we want to make a motion to continue this to the fourth.
All right.
Should we say eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, eight o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, I move the community planning commission vote to continue the public hearing for ninety-two Congress Street until Tuesday, January fourth, twenty twenty-two. I got that right?
I was waiting for that coming out right second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. So before we vote on, is any, is everybody okay with that? Anybody have any further, uh, questions, uh, comments on it? We all good? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Hayden.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
And myself is I, so you are, uh, um, standing till that, till that time, Joe, so I hope that gives you enough time to, uh.
I hope so too. Uh, I'll, uh, I'll let you know and if if it's not, I'll, I'll confer with Danielle and we'll figure it out.
We, yeah, we can always move it along a little more because it's just starting out now, so.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I think you're down at the number four, Warren. Other business.
Yeah, on the agenda. Okay, I'm trying to get that to come back up. Here we go. None, uh, no, I only got, uh, what do you got that I don't have? I got one, two, three.
Well, you got, well, no, it's it's Roman numeral four. Other business and old and old and new.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. No, I was looking at the actual, uh, stuff for the, uh, for the meeting here, so.
Yeah, well, we did the A and R, we did ninety-two.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, you're not doing the next two things, and we did thirty-five.
This thing is just slow. So. Yep, okay. There we go. So do we have ZBAs? Uh, yes, we do, huh?
We don't have any ZBAs.
Uh, well, we, the the ZBA has a meeting on Thursday.
Oh.
Did they not send us those applications?
And we, and, yes, and and one of the things they're gonna, well, Danielle, do you want to explain any of this with the thing with Jerry and all that, so?
Sure.
We sent them, okay, go ahead and tell them.
Yeah, so two seventy-one Main Street, which was the, um, application for the electric vehicle charging stations, which the CPC moved, um, and then, you know, realized that their intent was to do animated signs, um, on the stations, um. So the locations themselves were not really the issue. Uh, the issue really was that they were, they wanted to put these TV screens on them that really are not allowed by our zoning bylaws, so, um, you know, Jerry was in agreement that they were not allowed by the bylaws, so. Um, they issued them or di- denied the the sign permit that they then applied for and, um, that decision is now being appealed, so. Warren, knowing that they were coming in, it was advertised, but I don't know that they ever sent us the application for it. Anyway, really wanted to send in a comment, so I did send a comment, kind of summarizing what the concerns had been and and saying that this was not recommended, um, to, you know, that the cited the part of the zoning bylaw that specifically does not allow television screens, advertising, animation, flashing, rotating images, that kind of thing. Um, Warren, did you want to say?
Yeah, yeah, I only to find out that they already had one on the front of the building and, um, that, uh, that Miss Debbie noticed and, uh, mentioned to the, mentioned to the building inspector, and anyway, so we, we, you know, they don't have permission for that one either. Now, that one's probably not as big a concern, except for it does violate the bylaw. However, the other two are clearly put in a position where they gotta run people over, walk them to and from the store. That's just all we're.
Absolutely.
Gotta get run down, so we just, we just, um, but there was a concern that the, um, that, um, that the ZBA may not have, may not understand completely everything that's been gone on there, so we sent them, uh, so I had Danielle send them a note reiterating our position on it and and the whys and so forth. So I didn't know if the board itself wanted to send anything else, because basically what I'd said, I didn't want to speak. Uh, I just spoke as the chair of the board to 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 say, just to remind them of these issues and remind them of the legal issues. And that's basically what we did.
I think we should, we could send them a a note to them, saying to support the building inspector, because he's the one that denied that this, that signage, the moving signage is what those things are. They're, they're, they're more of a, they're more of a, uh, advertisement than they are a charging system.
Right, so I'd really like something that came from the board, and I think that one of the, and so one of the things I left out on purpose so that the board itself could push it forward perhaps, is the fact that this is the whole idea behind the appeal is a hardship. There is no hardship here.
No, yeah, they're not gonna make any money.
Created if they do it.
Yes, they're not gonna make any money.
I don't know that they need a hardship to appeal the building inspector's decision. I don't think this is a variance request. Yeah, I don't.
It would have to be.
I mean, they would come back. Yeah, but I don't think they've, have they actually applied for a variance? I mean, they would be, so in the future.
If they, if, in order to appeal the building inspector's decisions, they're gonna have to ask that they're gonna have to allow them to do something than what the stated law is. That's a variance.
It's a variance.
Right, it will be. It isn't yet, it will be.
Yeah.
It will be.
Well, I don't think we want to even get that far. I mean, this is ridiculous. And also, um, you know, I, um, coming from the board could be also some comments, uh, along the lines of, they didn't, they didn't tell us this is what they were doing. They kind of didn't. We put in the one that we, that that we sent over already was as professional owners of this, of this, uh, shopping center, they should have been aware of the law, the fact that they proposed something that was that in violation of the law and then didn't even tell us about it. That's like a double whammy. I mean, there's no.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't do that.
Yeah, and they, they hid, they hid what what those screens.
Real intent was.
Yeah. Real intent is to advertise.
Anyway, the building inspector asked me to to, uh, make sure that we made our position and educated them as much as we possibly could prior to this meeting, so that they would, uh, so they would understand why it's important that that we, uh, that we don't allow those in this particular location. So anything that the board would like to add through Danielle? I would, uh, if you think there's something else that should be added in there.
Well, you know, what I, what I had said, but any anybody else could add something too. I guess I'm the big mouth tonight.
I just noted, um, to make sure I got everything, um, uh, supporting the building inspector's decision, um, that there would be no hardship for future variance. Um, it was not included in the presentation. Chris, did I capture your, I I was writing in.
Yeah, no, you, you, you've got what I, I mean, we can't say that, you know, it's, it's, it's only, they're only putting them there to make money. Um, they're really, they're, they're, I mean, they're, they're trickle chargers, they're not real chargers. You'd have to have those things plugged in for twelve hours to charge your batteries or more. It's not even as good as a household charger, from what I could see from the output that they're giving. So it's really more, I thought it was a ruse, um, for for putting, uh, advertising, moving advertising in that parking lot, so. Um, you know, we, we, we looked at that and said, oh, great, we got some chargers coming in on private property. It'd be wonderful because it's a place where people drive their, drive their Teslas and they'll plug into it. No Tesla's gonna plug into that because it's not worth it. You know, and I don't know what they're gonna charge for for their, for their electricity, because there is a charge for the electricity.
Does that, does those charging stations have a charge for electricity or is it complimentary?
I know that, I know a Tesla does. Most, most charging stations do have a charge for the electricity.
Well, the thing is, if it's as low output as you say, for the cost of running a hundred watt light bulb, they could have you plugged in for an hour, and that's, that's only a few cents and certainly.
Yeah. They maybe, they maybe picking that up for free, I don't know. They never said that either.
There was an option when, um, Jerry and I met with them before they decided to appeal this decision, um, they had said that there was an option where they could charge and they could charge money and and give cars a a real charge while they were there, but that the owners of the plaza didn't want to go in that direction. Um, we thought that that would solve the problem.
They're gonna make them pay for it.
Yeah, exactly.
You could charge the customer. I mean, people do pay to have, I mean, I don't know.
The point, that, that, the owners of the, of the, of the, uh, shopping center would have to be collecting the money from the people, charging the people. But the people are not gonna plug in, they'd rather just go back home and plug in. You know, it's not like we live sixty miles from most places, and most of the people that shop at that store probably live within ten miles of that store. So there's not really, um, so.
It's not a need to do it.
Is, uh, is rather. Advertising for the, for, for three cents worth of electricity.
Paid advertising.
Paid advertising, yeah, ain't gonna be free to be on those things. They gotta be paid. And that's what they're gonna make their money, and the store's gonna make money too.
Yeah.
And they get to check the sustainability box for their portfolio.
Yes, right, they look good. They look good, Ryan, you're correct. It's, that's the other thing it's all about. That's what got us kind of tied into it really quick, right?
Yep. So, um, it may be that, you know, we just, so do you want to sense, you want to send your comments, Chris, and anybody else is off to the.
I think it should just come from, I think it should come from the board. That, that works from the board.
Well, that's what I want. I wanted to come from the.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
For me, but now we're gonna do the board.
Well, Warren, I think after we spoke, I, I don't think you were that specific about how to sign it, so I signed it from the CPC. But I'll send a second one and it can be from the CPC again.
Yeah, tell us, but, but the second one could say, as a result of discussion at our meeting.
Sure.
Yeah.
This, this was, um, you know, there was, uh, there was input from the rest of the board, from the, from the whole board, that this is not a great idea and that.
We're being notified of.
Yeah, and that we, um, you know, and that the whole board supports the building inspector's decision, so. So.
So anything else on the zoning board that we don't know that's coming up?
No, I, I'm. Jumped on me about it and, um, and I went down to see Danielle and said, hey, what's going on here? We, we don't seem to, we don't seem to be getting. I think we need to not now, but maybe in the not too distant future, send a, um, a request to the, to the Board of Appeals that they give us a little more information so that we can do a better job of advising them.
Yeah.
Right.
Because we're not getting enough information to advise them.
Yeah, it's, it's going backward again.
Yeah, I don't think it's going backward for the same reasons it went backwards before. I think it's going backward now because of, uh, um, new, too many new people on the, on the board.
Right.
Still learning the ropes and learning what it is that they need to look for and to do.
Are they, are they taking any of the classes that are available?
I, I don't know.
Send the information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Danielle sent the information, Warren.
Yeah, for the CTPC schedule, but, um.
You know, whenever we went to those meetings, there were more zoning board people at those meetings than there were planning board people at the meetings, because they thought there was more important.
Well, yeah, but a lot of zoning boards do what we, some, some, a lot of what we do, some zoning boards do instead.
That's true, that's true.
So we're covering, we're covering some things, you know, that's just the way it is, so.
I'm taking those courses right now. Good for you, good for you, Jeremiah.
Any, um, planning what, planning administrator updates? Uh, yes, yes.
Yes, let's talk about, uh, our update on Shailene.
Shailene, yes, we had a meeting today. Yeah, uh, for Shailene, and we've, uh, we've made a bunch of headway. They've, uh, Dave Murray's gone back and fixed some of the things that were done that were creating some of the problems and Lou Roy is now gonna be the engineer of record, so. Um, we're gonna get some, uh, support from him. Um, in, in, when he does the as-built, he's gonna do, normally when he does the as-built, he'd just do the roadway, but he's agreed to do some of the topo surrounding, especially down by lot nine down that very end to give us some, so look at some existing gray or some of the, that they has-built grades so that we can get some kind of an idea if our runoff calculations are still valid. Uh, they had a small, they had a small study done of the, uh, of the, uh, west, well, basically the southwest side of, uh, of lot nine, uh, adjacent to the, uh, detention pond, and they're gonna provide that to Dave Jane Grandy to review those drainage chelms, to make sure that, you know, they are actually, that they're valid. Um, so we're making some headway there and solving that problem. I, I, did I miss a couple of things there? I think that's, uh.
Yeah, no, I think, um, it's great news that we have an engineer of record for the project, um, you know, it was good to sit down and and talk about
Yeah.
what's happened and what the next steps are. Um, I think a lot of the actual work. What's happened and what the next steps are. Um, I think a lot of the actual work, they feel has been done. As far as the media, like remediating, the, you know, addressing the, the problems. I think we agreed that, you know, other than having Dave Jean Grande assess the new calculations that were done, not by Luke, but by another engineer that Mr. Murray hired. Um, we are gonna have Dave look at that. Um, but other than that, I think the next real assessment that would be done would, would be when it's time for the ASBILT plan. To be, to be looked at and unless there are.
Really hard.
Unless we have an issue, which I think looking at it on the ground, um, you know, they, they made the grades conform to what the original. Subdivision plan was, so there's no new approval needed. Um, it's, it's just that they were going back to. The way the, the water was supposed to behave before. So we're hopeful that that will. Help.
Right, hopeful that'll work and then again.
Do we know how far?
He's gonna put a little semi type detention pond further up on the, uh, on the, um. Basically on the east side, he's gonna put of that, of that lot. Uh, he's gonna put a little, uh, depression that will catch any water and slow it down. And, um, and infiltrate certain amount of, because it is sandy soils over there, so. Um, and, and again, filling everything in back to it, so the grades that are on the ground now conform more closely to the ones on the. Original subdivision approval is gonna help a lot, but also. Also getting, um, having the, the landscaping done and having some greenery and some grass and stuff going to absorb some of this is gonna help.
So Warren, how, do you know how far off the, uh, the grades were? At the time of bad runoff to the, what they were supposed to be?
Oh, yeah, it was, there was some big storm swells. It's almost like they captured all the water in the area and brought it down to that one little point down there.
Oh, is that right?
Down there. There was a big hole they dug in the ground before, like a plunge pool. It's all sand over there, all sand.
Yeah.
So all the water would run into that plunge pool and just disappear down through the sand, but you couldn't leave that there because, you know, it's like it's a hazard, so they.
Yeah.
Once, so they fit, it got all got filled in and graded and everything, but, but they left those swales there. So now the water came down those swales and ran over the top of it and the odds, no, not a road, so.
Okay.
That's all, that's all been fixed basically back to where it was.
So, so it wasn't, it wasn't slight. It was a lot, it was, it was a large change you had to.
Look at some of the, uh, pictures, some of the videos sent to us is.
Oh, I saw the water. I saw the water.
Like a stream.
Yeah, that looked like the water coming off the hill behind my house.
Yeah, well, there's also water coming out at that, on, on the, um. I don't know what, what line is it that's across the street there? Danielle, is it six?
No, I think six is the one right next to it. It's the next one, but it's right across the street.
Yeah, anyway, anyway. I went over there and looked and water's breaking out of the hill. I'm like, look, water's breaking right out of the hill on this thing, so he's gonna put a little curtain drain in there and direct it over to the catch basin. Because that, that, that's, that's, uh, that detention pond is huge. It's more than big enough to handle pretty much everything that can be brought to it. Uh, and so we're, we're gonna try to capture some of that water too. And satellite it come out of the ground and run across with a curtain drain and drop it into the catch basin and feed it to the, to the, uh. Detention pond and, and let the detention pond, you know, either get rid of it or, or send it where it would normally be going. Which is across the, across that, the lot line and into that wooded area.
Yeah, where it was supposed to go in, in the beginning.
Well, yeah, used to sheet flow down there, that, so, so.
The way it was designed to follow like it had been.
What was what?
I say it, they designed it to, to flow the way it had been.
There wasn't, it doesn't appear that there's a problem with the original design. When the guy from lot nine changed the whole is grading and put a house one and a half times the size. Requiring, and he's holding money back on that house to, um. To put proper gutters on it into the, into the infiltration units that are in the ground right now. Just try to slow that down too, so, because there was supposed to be some amount of, of guttering, which when we were over there, looked, it was only about twenty percent guttered. And it's gotta be about fifty percent when they're done. So again, everything, every drop helps here, so.
Yeah.
So theoretically. Theoretically, um, the next time we get a big rain, the way things are right now, it should be pretty well mitigated.
That could be Saturday.
Let's see. Do you want to add anything to that, Danielle?
No, I think that this is, I think hopefully we're in good shape for right now. Um. I feel better having an engineer overseeing.
Yep.
Yeah, because we didn't for a while, so.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, not, we had an engineer, but the developer needed an engineer.
Right, right. That's what I meant.
He's a somewhat hesitant engineer.
I can understand.
Well, I mean, he always like, oh, I don't know if I want to do this all, you know, drainage scale to do this all catchment area. You know, and, uh, so I, I agree that he could probably, in doing the ASBILT, if he showed the actual, if he, if he. Did the, the grades surrounding the cul-de-sac down the end there and in that particular catchment area and gave us at least a grading plan. That we can compare to the original subdivision plan, we'd be able to get a pretty good ideas to whether or not that catchment was working the way it was supposed to.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
That was a fun meeting.
Well, it was good. We made progress and. About where we were going with it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think we're, I think, you know, you know, um. They know how to do all this stuff. Sometimes you gotta force them into it. And that's basically, I feel like we, I feel like we basically had to take them by the hand, lead them down and tell them if we don't, we're gonna spank them. You know, that, you know, whatever, but they, uh, ultimately though, they were cooperative and, and. Agreed to it and even did, predid some of the fixing, knowing that that's what was, should have been done in the first place. So already a good way towards our, our repair of the situation that, that was not done right, you know.
That's good.
All the changes were made in, in some defense of the situation, I suppose. Some of the changes were made in, when the whole thing was in process in an attempt to try to capture some of the water that was running off. And, and, and to direct it to try to get it to go, but, but, but they were not, they, you know, they weren't engineered, so they were just like done. And, and.
Yeah.
Work and so, but they made the problem worse in some cases. So, uh, so that's all been taken out and it's all been put back to pretty much the way it shows on the subdivision plan, so we're hopeful that that will do the job.
Good.
So that's where we're at. Okay, anything, it's always, anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, the, um, so the capital improvement committee is, uh. Capital Improvement Planning Committee is meeting tomorrow afternoon and they're gonna be talking about the Central Street project and repaving money for Route twenty eight. And, um, this time, instead of me submitting the request, actually, I had been working with the town engineer and DPW offered to submit it as. Part of their, um, list of different projects and so, um, I worked with the town engineer on that and. Um, he's gonna be presenting and I'll be attending and if anyone wants to go, then great. If not, that's fine. Um, I'll be going with John and he'll be doing the presentation. For all of his street and sidewalk and other improvement, um, requests, um, and he'll have. Yes, and the other one is Route twenty eight, which, um, so he and I have been working with TEC on that plan, um, the. Plan, that's still kind of ongoing.
Twenty eight, I'm gonna, we'll pave with twenty eight.
Um, so the redesign, actual construct, reconstruction funds, he wants to request. I don't really think that the town is going to give funds to actually reconstruct Route twenty eight, but he wants to have it in the portfolio of.
Okay, yeah, in other words, try to duplicate what happened in Reading, the type thing.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, not the, not the construction funds itself, but the, the design funds. So that we could get it on the tip to compete, right? Not that we would.
Right.
The design.
Can't do any of that.
Still be on the hook for the design.
Yeah.
So, um, so as far as that study goes, I was in touch recently with Liz, the consultant on that project. Um, she has results from the survey. She's gonna be calling me probably early January just to kind of go over what the findings were before. Putting everything into a report, um, with recommendations. Um, so that study is ongoing and then by the time, you know, summer rolls around and, you know. Capital funds are given, you know, it's possible that we could have some redesign money for.
Okay, so, uh, so I'm gonna just throw this out there and maybe you can bring it with you. We gotta do Conken Street is a mess.
I know, so that's on John's radar too, and I actually have to ask him what the plan is for when.
Is the rest of the board with me? Can we, can we? To, uh.
Let me ask.
To take a closer look at Conken Street and see if they can move that up the ladder a little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where all our money comes from right now. You want to keep those people kind of happy. And everybody in town, just about.
Now, I'm not, I mean, it's not just them. I mean, that, I mean, I thought, I thought that when we had Kat do the work up there, that they were gonna repave. The whole section of that road and make it nice. And all they did is patch it.
Yeah.
Why do I feel like we didn't, why do I feel like they didn't do what they were supposed to do there?
They might not have. And, and nobody, nobody stayed on top of them.
I, I know you, I know you have another project you gotta work on, Danielle. You don't really have time to do this right now. But at some point in the not too distant future, we should take a, just a quick look back at that approval. And see what the paving requirements were because it, it seems to be that. Given driving by there, it's all just a big patch that they never really, my understanding was they were supposed to pave ju- just so far up and just so far past. Their property to, to make sure that there wasn't a mess there. And it isn't. Right now, but what I would like to do is maybe take a small contribution to the town to help support paving of Conken Street. In total.
Okay, let me find out, um. Uh, that, that's been away a long time. I mean, that, that project predates me, so it's been.
Yeah.
Been nine years at least.
But every time.
It might be.
Every time I drove by there, I kept thinking, okay, they got the patch done. When they finish building and everything, they'll pave this and then it just like never happened, I felt.
It never happened, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know that was part of their approval, but.
I'd have to take a look at that plan, but I want to say my memory serves me, there's, it shows, pave, you know, repaving that roadway from. One point to another point to, uh. Um, you know, to, to clean up that area right there where they had to do all their hookups and stuff.
Yeah, I want to see maybe the town said that they were coming to do it and that's all they did was repair it. And they might have got money from them for that and then they never expended the money on that. I don't know if that's.
I don't recall that being the case, Chris. I, I don't know that it isn't, but I, I don't recall it being the case.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of who the, uh, who the, uh. Well, Mike Sorgen was the town engineer, but who was the head of the DPW at that time? It wasn't Hanlon, was it? Was it still Hanlon when we did that?
Maybe so, yeah.
Cause the handling would have come, you know, they would have had asked to do that, right?
Hamlin was big on paving. He wanted to pave everything.
Right, but he wanted to do it himself.
Yeah. But he wanted, he, which I can't, I don't blame him because he knew that the more repaved roads, we have the more money we get from the state, so.
Yeah, that was the dirt roads. That's correct, but.
Was good.
Yeah.
He wanted money for it, so.
Right, right.
If you get, if you get a chance to make a note, just to look into that to see and then drive out, we'll take the plan, drive out there and take a look and say, I don't think they really.
Do what they were supposed to.
I don't.
Okay.
But either way, um. Put Conken Street up. There, there's a lot of traffic that travels back and forth on there and that road is a mess.
Yeah, I will ask John where that is, um, and I'll let him know that you are all concerned about it.
Yeah.
You need to get paid soon, okay.
And of course, the one, it's, um, it would, it will, you know, serve us well if we have a project going there to fix that roadway when. When we look at anything other than, anything else that's happening on that street, you know.
Definitely, okay.
Yep, it'll be a good, it'll be a feather in our cap, so we should do that. We've tried to move that forward. Just planning ahead, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, last thing, the, uh, DPW director, uh, Joe Parisi has put out the RFP for the new, um. Study, which is really quite different now from what FXM did, so I won't even really call it the update. It's, um, he, he's put out, um, this, uh, RFP with request for the proposals to be in. December twenty second and then, um, there's a group of us scheduled to evaluate them beginning of January. So I will keep you posted on that.
Okay.
This is, this is gonna be the best firm, not the cheapest firm, right?
Exactly.
Good, good. I did, the, the cheapest firm thing doesn't, you know.
Well, we got, yeah, it seems to me we got enough money for the best firm, so.
Yeah, yes, we did. But, you know, look at Route sixty two down here, Elm Street. That was the cheapest. Firm that did that job for the state. And boy, was it tough.
Well, construction, yeah, I mean, that's different, but for an RFP for a study like this, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's not, I mean, it's probably gonna be.
Well, you know, there's a lot of, again, this new, these new bills, they're trying to get through Congress. There's a lot of infrastructure money there. And we gotta try to make sure somebody keeps an ear and eye on.
This, this, there's another, there's another few billion dollars coming to the state of Massachusetts after the four.
Yeah, we'd like to see if we can get as much of that as we possibly can.
We gotta talk to, we gotta talk to. We gotta talk to Senator Tar and Congressman, uh.
Representative Brad Jones.
Representative Brad Jones, thank you.
Yes.
I was like, I don't know why I was having a senior moment there.
That's okay. Well, I'm, I'll talk to, well, I'll talk, well, you know, I was kind of, as soon as I was kind of waiting for the. For to see if the whole thing got canned or if it actually went somewhere, but if it went somewhere, then I was gonna be on Bruce's doorstep, so.
Well, the, the first one went somewhere. But they just, they just allocated money from the first monies that they got last year. And they got more money coming to them, so. It might be time to talk to Bruce.
Yeah. To see if he's got his eye on that.
Yeah.
Not, we'll get him to put his eye on it.
Yeah, a little bit, a little, it would be nice, you know.
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't gotten a lot of cash out of that, you know.
Needs, you know, that we, um, you know.
Which is, which will help, which will help everybody.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to see some grants come through. I'd like to get a good grant to do that Central Street sidewalk. That would be a good, really good deal.
Yep.
Yeah, because that's, that's kind of a, I can't tell you how many people walk back and forth down there. I drive, go by them all the time, go head for the, head for the park and then coming back from the park, so.
Yeah, it's not a safe area.
As far as sidewalk use goes, I'd be willing to bet you put a sidewalk in there, it's gonna be, it's gonna get, when that sidewalk went in here on Havel Street, uh. I'm telling you, being able to watch that sidewalk all the time, see it, see how, how many people are on that every single day.
Yeah, they're walking on the sidewalk, not in the street anymore.
Yeah, it's impressive. Well, people wouldn't walk. Now they will.
Yeah, and the kids, the kids are walking on the sidewalk on Central Street going to school.
People go back and forth there all day long.
Yeah.
So it's really, it really made a, uh, it really made a huge difference in the, in the walkability of. Get downtown because it's really not that far to the library or to.
No, it's not.
Or any of those things, or the schools. And they'll watch.
Yes, get, get the kids from walking in the backyards.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeremiah.
Central.
Is it, is it true that there was originally a plan to put sidewalk down Marblehead Street that got, uh, curtailed recently?
Well, not real, well, actually, no, um. There was, what happened was that we had some, we got some money for, um, for Marblehead Street from the developers down there. And then we got, now we put a little money into it and we did a sidewalk as far as we could, right down to the subdivision. But we didn't just do in front of the subdivision, we did all the way up to Havel Street and the DPW did a lot of the work. So using money, funds that they got, that, that we got and funds that they got. So, um, so they, they collected from Deerfield and from the new subdivision down there. They collected all those people, but it doesn't go much further than that, that's all. Begin to get really spread out when you get that far too.
Nah, nah, I mean, that's, that's.
Not where he is.
Yeah, and it's not, I mean, it's, it's until you get to the Middleton line, I mean, it's dense houses all the way and, uh, I mean.
It was nothing where you are, Jeremiah.
Yeah. The front of my house is a frickin' racetrack.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it, it, it's ridiculous, the speeds that people drive and, you know, we're talking heavy, heavy trucks.
Mm-hmm.
The dump trucks, the, you know, I mean, it's, uh, I, I legitimately fear for my daughter.
Yeah, no, 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 it's, there's no question. They're, they're fast down there. Um, and most of those people don't live in North Reading.
And you got, you got neighbors, we have neighbors who have signs out in their front yard of the, this is a community, not a racetrack. And, and there, there's not, and the thing that I don't, I mean, this is, you know, a question for another day, you know, it's not necessarily maybe a, a topic for us, but. You know, there's, there's, I mean, we've got the, there's the crossing of the trail in Harold Parker from one side to the other side. There's no signage on the road. There's no crosswalk signs. There's no radar, you know, your speed zone. And you look at how fast people drive on Havel compared to Marblehead, it's night and day. And part of it, I think, is that it's a wider street, you know, um, you don't have poles as close to the road. It's night and day and part of it, I think, is that it's a wider street, you know, um, you don't have poles as close to the road. Um, it's it's a dan, it's a legitimately dangerous condition um that, you know, I'm curious, like, you know, uh, you know, how else in my other capacities I can go about trying to advocate for changes on that? Because I understand that's not necessarily part of our mandate, but um.
Basically, the way this works, Jeremiah, is is that they do, they do like a a a matrix, you know, and they would, you know, to follow the streets. Now, we had a, now Dan, uh who who was on, Dan Mills was on the board before, was on a sidewalk committee and I think they did a matrix of needs as far as what's the, what's the neatest sidewalk down to the less needy sidewalks. And if you want to get a hold of that, you could find out where Marblehead Street showed up in that whole matrix.
Maybe he probably has a copy of that.
What's been done.
Send that to you. Yeah, I can send that to you and also the thing that came after that was we did the complete streets prioritization plan. We took a bunch of, and we prioritized it, um, and I can't remember if Marblehead Street is on there or not, but um that was supposed to be the list of projects that would, that we would be eligible for for grant funds for for complete streets. Of course, now complete streets is telling us we're only eligible every four years.
So anyway, there's a, there's an idea to find out where you are on it and then perhaps to advocate to get your street moved up if you want. I mean, there's that that's what, that's the information you're looking for. There it is.
You know, the other thing is is get, uh, see if we can get a officer down there and do some radar checking.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it helps for a while, Warren. You know, and if they don't know, they're not down there all the time. Nobody complains.
I've never.
When you get into Middleton, there's one of those little flashing signs that comes on, says you go, slow down. There's two of them actually when you get.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, but I mean, who's who's in charge of those flashing signs? Is that uh?
Police Department.
The police is, yeah, I think the DBW puts them up.
We bought one for the police department at one point out of some funds of many years ago from funds from the subdivision. We bought the police one.
Can I pay for one? I mean, I mean, literally, I mean.
They have much money anymore.
They're like three thousand dollars a piece. Ish, two and twenty five hundred dollars a piece, I think.
But the DBW and and the police, you know, they, if you want to, if you fund it, they might, they might be okay with it.
Well, the police department moves them around, too.
Help out, yeah.
Yeah, you get, if you did neighborhood push, if you ask them if it's okay, then get a neighborhood push and everybody puts in fifty bucks and before you know it, you got a sign down there.
Yeah.
I've also noticed that in in parts of Middleton and parts of Lynnfield, you know, they've got the uh weight capacity uh on on certain streets and that's another thing that uh I've never understood why we don't have something like that for uh bypass streets that I would, I would consider Marblehead. I mean, it's it's a shortcut kind of street.
Yeah, they should be going down sixty two.
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't seem appropriate for dump trucks and the number of dump trucks that I count, I, where my office is and you know, the the front of the house, I just watch that street and it's uh, I've, I'm, I'm honestly like installing a camera in the front um just to kind of kind of capture the the behavior on the road in front of us. I mean, I know, no, it's that, no exaggeration. I mean, it could lead us to moving, you know.
Jeremiah, just so you'll understand, Marblehead is considered one of the main streets in North Reading and the way you know that is that when the town plows it, they plow the mains and I'm serious, this is, this, so that's the consideration, that's considered a main route from.
Done first, huh, Warren?
Havel Street and then Havel Street from town line to town line and sixty two from town line to town line. Those are the mains that the town plows. And the reason they, and they, and the reason they plow those because of the main access routes. Uh, there's not a, there's not a commercial route that replaces those and so that's what you'll run into, so you probably won't get that changed.
Yeah, maybe not.
What would you still know? Now you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the way they're considered. That's how they're called out.
Yeah, we need to save up our money so that we can move into a neighborhood.
Yeah, well. Yeah, when I bought my house, it was dead end street.
Yeah, it's not anymore, is it?
Yeah, we used to have block parties down where Dwayne comes on the Foley. We used to have block parties down there.
Didn't you develop that one?
Dwayne often closed Foley off and there was nobody coming in and out because everybody lives there, so.
Yeah.
But then it's been a millennium since we've been able to do that, so as they opened it all up and all the new streets and in and out is, now it's a cut through. So.
Yeah.
All right, uh, I think we uh we all set. Anybody have anything else they need to bring up? Are you all set, Danielle?
I'm all set.
All done.
Okay, good.
Twenty first.
Yep, yeah.
Twenty first.
Great, so I thank you all for coming tonight. We did, I think we made some headway tonight. We'll see what we, we'll see how we do.
No holiday parties on the twenty first.
Everybody be here. Keep an eye on it and if you, I don't know if I can, I have a Thursday, I'm, I have an afternoon appointment. I'm not sure if we get out time. Um, but if either anybody else wants to go to the Board of Appeals and and defend our um.
That's a Zoom meeting. Is it, is it a live meeting or Zoom meeting?
Zoom.
Can you send us the details, Danielle? Is that possible?
Yes, you know what? I think it's actually been posted already. Um, I'll just give myself a note. I will send you all the.
Yeah, because, yeah, I might have to zoom it, too, so I wouldn't mind getting.
Yeah, they won't, yeah, they're not meeting in person, I don't think.
Yeah. Well. We were the first board to go back to Zoom because I knew that this was not going to be good and then everybody followed you.
I don't think the ZBA ever started meeting in person again. I think they've been continuously Zoom, Concom, too, because it's so much easier for them, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's um, if we if we can, some of us can, you know, let's see what we can do to make sure that this stop and shop thing doesn't get out of hand.
Yeah.
So.
Alrighty.
Then good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Yep.
Good night.